Good evening. It is five thirty P M on Tuesday, January second, twenty twenty four, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in Council Chambers at City Hall, eleven twenty-three West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Vice Chairman Mo's Dunkle, presiding. Also present are Commissioners Grant Simmons, Slate Camp, Amelia Boyd, Wayne Benner, and I would also like to open our, welcome our new Commissioner Ivan Reymar. Welcome. Commissioner Hastings is absent. We'll now recite the pledge of allegiance of everyone who will please stand. Okay, are there any general announcement, announcements from Commissioners or from city staff? Hearing no announcements, we'll move on with the approval of a meeting minutes from December fifth regular meeting.
We're sure it's December fifth?
It is December fifth.
If I recall correctly, the, the second meeting in December was not.
Oh, that was.
That's right.
Good point.
Motion approved.
Second. Okay, been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes and the minutes are approved. Uh, next item is the appointment of officers, which is required to occur annually according to the commission bylaws. Our current officers are John Hastings, Commission Chairman and myself, Mo's Dunkle as Vice Chairman. Although he was unable to attend this meeting, Commissioner Hastings has indicated he will, he is willing to continue as Chair and is also happy to pass the gavel on to someone new. I will first entertain a nomination for Chairperson.
Do we do that? Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll nominate John Hastings to be Chair.
I'll second.
Okay, if there's no other nominations, then we would.
I'll third it.
You'll third. We'll work on those bylaws. Um, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Benner?
Aye.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Commissioner Remar?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now I will ask for nominations for Vice Chairman. Or Chairperson.
I'll nominate Mo's Dunkle for Vice Chair.
I'll second it.
Okay, um, this will also be a roll call vote.
Uh, for the record, who is the motion? By?
Grant.
Second by camp.
Yes.
Alright, roll call vote. Commissioner Benner?
Aye.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Commissioner Remar?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, um, so, uh, at this time, we'll have a review discussion of the comprehensive plan final draft comments. I will now yield the floor to City Planner Amy Tweetin for an introduction of this agenda item.
Yes, your Chairman. Okay, we did appointment of officers. Um, again, the planning commission has already made its recommendation to City Council. Um, City Council asked for additional public workshops. Those were held and we also had the plan online for just over a month. Um, and particularly on the online version, we got a lot of comments. The public workshops, I think we had about between the two nights sixty or so, um, attendees. Um, and then just looking through, I mean, there were a lot of comments and I would say a lot of them, um, you know, the, the good thing, I guess, is when you see how many views of the document, although we don't know exactly what that means, that if that just means someone scanned the Q R code, but two thousand views is still a lot, even if a fraction of those people read a majority of the documents. Um, a lot of the comments were more, um, commentary or, um, things that they want to come, like the next steps, like when are you going to fix the infrastructure and, um, but I guess based on the comments from the workshop and uh, what we saw online as well as the public hearing comments that we've received, some themes that I have kind of picked up on is again, more language on heritage trees. Uh, there was comments on waiting on the action on the plan until the new council was in place. Having more input on the downtown waterfront design report. But overall, the, the concerns were raised with building heights and protecting community character. Um, adding language regarding climate change, addressing infrastructure. There were several comments, particularly at the open house about purchasing the Baldi property for parkland. Um, and then add more references to tribal heritage. So those are some of the broader and frequent comments that came up. Um, a lot of those are uh, fairly easy to incorporate. A lot of the comments were change this word, add this text. Those could potentially also be incorporated. It's just how much is it changing the actual reading of the document? Um, because all the changes that we have to make, we have to have Logan Simpson update the draft. So it's just going to be a, a question of uh, how much more, um, we're going to have to pay the consultant to finish the document. Uh, but ultimately, as I said, it's the city council will decide which of these comments uh, to incorporate. Um, I wanted to give you the full picture of what all the comments were and just kind of see um, based on your review, if you think there was anything major we missed. I mean, we, we got the same comments that City Council and at the workshops again, regarding certain items that the commission had heard. We had made some changes based on those. Um, but those comments are still coming back and I, specifically on heritage trees. So likely we will add more language on that, or that will be the direction of council. Um, again, I, I still believe that a lot of that language belongs in the forest management plan. Um, and but if that's the direction of council, we can add it. It's just, it's very specific. Um, but if that's a policy or objectives that they want to add to the urban forestry goals, then uh, that may be, I don't necessarily, again, we'll see what council wants to do with it if they want to make a lot of changes, if they send it back to you. Um, and I, I don't know necessarily that they would make many changes in the future land use map. The only, like of these comments, um, the comment that just came up a lot was that the city should purchase the Baldi property from the utility. Currently, the future land use map shows that partly as public quasi-public, which would be park space. But then we also have the corner of it as potentially residential. Um, again, the challenge with that property is getting utilities to it, but um, as we're looking at negotiating the A C I with the county, that might be, you know, if growth is going to occur out there, that might be a good place to have additional parkland. That's not where, that's not the direction, um, of where we need parkland currently is at the, on the north end, but you know, again, the, it, I don't think the current future land use is inconsistent with using the majority of that for parkland. So I don't necessarily foresee any major changes for the future land use. So with that, just open it up to Commissioner.
Say, so Amy, um, what's, so what's the sort of the framework on this going back through city council then? Meaning, well, well, we looked at the, the comments while we had a bit of a discussion tonight. What's sort of city council's next step relative to the comp plan approval?
They will, uh, we will go similar. We'll talk about the comments received.
Okay.
They'll give direction on what to incorporate. Um, and then likely, so we'll go back, make those changes, bring it back to them in a final, final draft form. Um, and then if they're comfortable with that, then they would schedule another public hearing.
Okay. So it'll be a review, a cleanup, public review?
A public hearing.
Public, okay.
Yeah.
Public hearing.
Which again, they may get more comments at that point. Um, but again, generally by the time you get to your public hearing, you think you're almost there.
We'll see.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick question here. Is there a way of deciphering who basically is a city resident and who's not in the comments? Because I noticed two of the people that made comments that I was looking at are not even city residents.
Uh, yeah, particularly on the online comments, because I, I sorted those by commenter. Um, you know, you, you can, well, if they are property owners, we can figure out if they're city residents or not. If they are not property owners, then we couldn't figure out if they, the majority are. I know at least a couple are not city residents. Um, but I think at least one of those individuals, the comments were comments and opinions more than this needs to be changed.
I agree. Mr. Chair? And just because they're not residents, city, city residents doesn't mean that they don't own property in the city.
That's true. They may, or they may be business owners, or they may work in the city. So, um, clearly, you know, we are the county seat. We are the hub of economic activity in the county. So you live in the county, you you have things that you have opinions on, which goes on in the city, for sure.
Is there any possibility this would come back to us?
There's a possibility. It just depends, um, if city council wants you to, wants you to weigh in on the comments to decide which comments, which I don't know that that will occur, or if they want you to hold more public hearings. I don't, I don't, there's nothing that requires them to, I think, unless they make some major changes, then they would probably send it back, but realistically, nothing that, none of the comments that I read indicated there was any major changes needed to the document. More tweaks.
What is the, uh, city, and I'm apologize for being ignorant. Called that a lot, but anyway, um, one of the things I saw brought up and a concern of mine, um, is B and Bs, uh, in A D U's and short-term rental of A D U's. Um, my thoughts were when the A D user first approved, I'm going to assume twelve years ago or something like that, that it was creating some living space for the people working here in town. And I know many that were using it, and I know many that have been converted now to, oh, I shouldn't say many. I know of some that have been converted to B and Bs, et cetera, and which is short circuiting the whole concept of having some affordable, uh, housing for, um, employees, um, in various service industries here. Where do they stand on Airbnb's now?
Uh, well, we have the current code, which limits the number, um, that we can non-owner occupied. Um, short-term rentals we can have in residential districts, but in commercial districts, they're allowed. Owner, if it's an owner occupied property, so you live there and you want to run out your A or B, B and B short-term, that is allowed. So the only limit really we have is, um, for properties that are not owner occupied, we have a limit of thirty-five in, in residential districts.
And how do they come by those? Do they apply for a permit and then there's a?
Yeah, and then, then there's a waiting list. Once we get to that thirty-five, and right now our waiting list is about seventeen people.
And do you have any idea, or has anybody ever looked at how many A D U's were, that could have been, uh, housing?
That have been converted? Uh, we have, but that, it's interesting you should say that because particularly on the A D U front and changes we're proposing, I think we're going to run a report. So, um, particularly over the past year, how many A D U's were built and how many of those have since been converted short-term rentals? So we'll get you some more data on that.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Mm-hmm.
So if we go back to the frequent themes, um, there's some, there's obviously a statement here about building heights. I know that we talked about building heights a couple of meetings ago. Um, some of the other stuff I don't, I really shouldn't comment on if it's going to make the grade or not, but that would be my only, you know, concern is with Grant's question is, does it come back to us? Or is that, could that be decided by city council?
Well, what will happen with that is, um, we are, the direction of city council when they accepted the waterfront report was that workshops be scheduled on the different facets. So we are now scheduling workshops January, February, and March, just on downtown design standard zoning, historic preservation. So for the next three months, we're going to be focused on just that part of the report. Um, and those will be that, that process will include public surveys, public workshops, joint workshops with Planning and Zoning Commission, Historic District Commission, Arts Culture and Historic Preservation Commission, I should say, uh, and City Council. Um, so, and at the end of that, the goal is to have some draft um, code language as well as design guidelines, historic preservation code ready to go because hope, we are hoping, I mean, based on the discussion or the the process here on out that council will need to go through for the comprehensive plan. I don't see that being adopted before March. In that time, the plan, we're going to be working on the concerns with downtown regarding building design standards, building height, community character. So we're hoping that the comprehensive plan gets adopted about March, and that would be followed shortly after that, starting the whole approval process of codes um, that come out of, or changes to code that come out of these, the series of workshops.
Mr. Chair? Did you, have you finished?
I just have one thing. Um, I saw in the comments, there was a couple about the possible, um, I guess a more of a personal rejection to the idea of the carousel where it's pre, where it's currently stated for moving it to Travers Park or somewhere else. I didn't see that language unless there's a second slide, but is that something that should be considered?
That is what one of, so the, the workshops that will
It'll be covered.
Occur, yeah. So what, um, it was council wanted workshops on, um, downtown code and historic preservation, city beach concepts, uh, carousel location, as well as all of the streetscape concepts that came out of that report. So it's taking the concepts and the recommendations in the, the, in the waterfront, um, design competition report and, and vetting it further with the public.
Thank you.
But that, that is one of the areas that will be, um, that workshops will occur. Probably combined with city beach is my guess.
Mr. Chair? So Amy, the meetings from January to March, are, are they going to be one, a theme for each month, or is it going to be the same?
They're gonna build on each other.
Okay. So we'll give the public opportunity at each time to address those previous topics or continue to address those topics as we, as, as we move forward with it. Okay.
Any more discussion? Well. Um, I guess I'd have a little bit of input. Um, I feel like we've, I think we've went into pretty good detail with the heritage tree topic. And that one was at the top. I feel like they probably had a pretty good presence at the, at the open, uh, at the open houses. Um, some of these things don't look to me like they would fit in a comprehensive plan.
Like which ones?
Um, well, if you pull it up again, I can.
But just generally, like some of the specific things? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, building height, I think is probably one that although fallen up with community character does fit, and I could see how building heights could fit in there, but um, yeah, I I would think too that, um, addressing infrastructure is something that's an ongoing thing anyway. So.
Well, it's a lot of implementation.
Yeah.
Action items.
Right.
Type, the suggestions. It's not comp plan.
Hmm.
Um.
Well, or, or some of it may already be in the plan. It's, it's not at the level of detail that it will, but it talks about updating the wastewater treatment plans. And, um, other infrastructure needs we have.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm hopeful that the plan that we approved and sent to city council is, is very close to being ready to adopt. Um, I'm sure though, discuss it more though. But yeah, the interesting to me is the, the Baldi property. Um, I would not want to put that in the comprehensive plan, especially right now. Because I feel like there's, it can become very contentious. Um, because there was a, there was a purpose that it was purchased for and along the way, it's been used for other things and it's almost like if we go back and do it over again, we probably wouldn't own it. Um, but that doesn't mean that there isn't an opportunity of some kind, although that could be a whole new group of workshops on its own. Because everybody probably has an idea of what could be done there. And it could maybe still fit with the purpose that, you know, was originally intended. So I don't know if we'd want to throw that out either. At least long, long term. I think it's always good to own property rather than sell property. Um, so yeah, I'm hopeful that it's like once, once things kind of settle down, yeah, by March, that sounds like it, that'd be a good time to by then it should be good to go, I think. Without.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Because ideally we want the comp plan approved first before we get into code changing and doing all that sort of thing, moving forward.
Right, yeah. I mean, we're not like hung up on that. We have more to do. We have, we have items to, we can proceed with other things. Right?
Yeah.
So.
Definitely. Well, the discussion can definitely happen.
You're going to be busy in the next several months on, um, public engagement and, and meetings on taking those downtown design concepts further. Um, and again, the, the input was more that more input is needed on those, on the, the report that came out. They just, but the feeling is that it was, there wasn't enough engagement that went into it, and so that is what's going to now start occurring. So it was kind of, really, the report was a starting point. And now we're moving forward to get additional input before things get to a point that they can get implemented. Um, and you know, again, it, the purchase of all deep property for parkland, that was a comment, but that is very much a council decision, what they're doing with that property. Uh, so again, I think part of the complicating factors, we've had so many planning efforts going on at one time that people came to the comprehensive plan meetings, thinking they were talking about the downtown waterfront competition. And so there's just that, a little, um,
Still confusion.
Well, I, that's what I'm seeing with a variety of themes.
Right.
That, that speaks to that, that people showed up, and I'm glad people showed up because I, I mean, we don't get a whole lot of participation in a lot of things, so it's nice to see, even if it's somewhat out of place, but, um, it's interesting. I don't see any comprehensive plan themes so that were based around like, uh, city parks or recreation areas in town or stuff like that, because that's been a big topic. It's been a, you know, been in the news and I don't see that referenced at all here.
There, yeah. There. So. Yeah, I had helped write a bit of an advocacy piece that had that sort of front and center, which was around public engagement and involvement. What does that look like? Do we want to bake that into the comp plan? It's sort of a big ask, but it gets down to the charrette policies and coming up with public derived three alternatives that the public has to choose from. I mean, there's sort of a framework here. It's a bit to discuss. It was in the advocacy pieces that were floating around the workshops itself, but I think it's important, and I would also agree, it's not really addressed in the comp plan. Cause I mean, think of a world where we're going to get another nine million dollar gift at some point. How do we handle it?
I don't know, will we?
Well, we'll see.
What happened with this last one?
But I mean, let's, you know, hope springs eternal. I assume there will be some windfall in which the city will have to decide what to do and what's the framework for deciding that. And so I think there's a real opportunity here, and I sort of want to advocate for how do we think through this going forward? Because let's not go through another traverse party.
Well, the Baldi property is going to be the next big.
Yeah, so let's build a framework. And so that's really what I'm advocating for.
I have a question about that. Amy, is that subdivisible?
Yeah.
Anything is right.
Uh, potentially, but again, the biggest issues with it are getting utilities to it. You just have to get under the railroad tracks. But.
But subdivide, sell to a developer, then that's their problem, correct?
Right.
And their expense.
Possible, anything's possible. For cost.
It's possible.
Throwing that out there.
But again, I, I think there is still the confusion of your comprehensive plan is your guiding document. It's goals and objectives. It's high level. When you get into your master plans, that's where you get the level of detail to actually get to implementation. Um, but so, and that's why the implementation table has, you know, come up with a public participation plan. So we're not confusing people. When we do engagement, what is it we're asking them for?
Uh, maybe we should have, I know we're going to get all workshopped out, but, um, it's great, you know, with this input, but maybe a workshop with the actual implementation plan. Once we've developed it, so then people could come and see exactly what our plan is to implement these certain goals and objectives and then come up with these, because a lot of this stuff that I, you know, we're reading is implementation. Um, so it's, so I think it would help with the confusion rather than come to this workshop about the comp plan. Well, then people don't understand the difference between the comp plan and our other plans. So maybe I just throwing it out there, I think it would be helpful for people is here's our comp plan implementation workshop. I don't know, whatever, but something to where people would actually understand the nuts and bolts of the comp plan and the next phase. Just throwing that out there.
So I, I would agree with you. Um, there was comments in here that was some residents showing, you know, a thirst to know more. And I think the workshops are good. I think over my period of time here, you know, I might have been the only one at a workshop. I might have been the only one at a workshop. So I see a lot more engagement, other than city staff, of course, but the turnout's ever been. Great that I remember, and I liked seeing the comments in there about people wanting to know more. So if workshops help to alleviate the problem, or, you know, this guys that. Um, people aren't being told. You know, maybe you don't need a. But what were they referring to, like a, a job position at city hall for walking around telling people basically? Cause a social position, maybe not that. But I think that it has increased over the years. I like to see the involvement. And. I like a workshop idea. Just saying.
Have a question? Maybe?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I should be asking you.
Give your training next week.
You just say, Mr. Chair.
Alright. Um, all again, being a neophytic in this, uh, job here. Is there po- possibly, could we get a matrix? Of. How we get from comprehensive plan? To our second plan, to the third and final plan. I mean, verbally, you were just explaining the matrix, how we were getting from one to the other. But it should be nice to be able to, if you could just see it linearly. Especially at some of these meetings where people are going to, if they could hand it to them and say, this is, you know, who's on first, what's on second? I don't know who's on third, and they could.
Graphic similar to that on the, the comprehensive plan webpage. Um, but it isn't necessarily linear because there's a lot of feedback loops, so. You do the comprehensive plan at direction of master plans, or you may have started with master plans. That then get pulled into your comprehensive plan, that then more master plan, you know, so it's. It's an ongoing cycle, but I understand what you're saying, and we can. Put something together.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
And, and we've had master plans put together. Way previous to, to working on the comprehensive plan, and then we'll have master plans. While during and, and even afterwards too, so. I feel, I, I feel like it's easy to get. Confused on what we're doing. It's like. It's like the comprehensive plan can be done in. Real time, like as we're doing a lot of other things too. Although we can get stuck on. A couple of things pretty easy. But that's why, I mean, it's well known, my, my intent is to move it forward, pass it. And get, get on down the road because we're gonna be doing another one. Not too long from now, probably. So. And it, and, and the thing I like about the comprehensive plan is. Even if it's not perfect, we're not like one hundred percent bound to it as we all know. There's parts to it that we can say those don't work right now, and we have the ability to adjust. At least in a minor way. Because it's a, it's a goal or a vision, not necessarily like. Hard and fast, and we're gonna, you know, we have to stick to this no matter what, like. A grid type street pattern, you know, like.
Well, there's a lot of case law.
Yeah.
That. As you note, well knows that, that's gone against, um. I mean, cities have gone astray from the comp plan, and it, the legal system has sided with, with that, so.
Well, the, the comp plan's not a legal document.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Legal documents, it, in and of itself a nebulous term, but it, it, it is.
Okay.
So I mean, it is. Every time you make, uh, many of your decisions, you have to make a finding that it's in accordance with the comp plan. Um, but it's intentionally vague. Um, so that you can. Kind of use it simply as a guideline, not as a strict.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? If there is no more discussion, we would now open our. Our, uh, meeting for a period for public comment, if there is any. Think we go to online first, if we have anybody that wants to speak online. Sorry to throw that at you.
Give us one second, please. And we do have a member of the public who wishes to speak. Heather Flint Shadow.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I, um. I'm an urban planner and environmental designer of about twenty-five years, and I've been following your plan process. You're doing a great job. And I wholeheartedly wanna support you to move it forward. Um, there were a few things I just wanted to comment on to clarify. Related to, um, the implementation. Pieces that you're looking at, that you have an implementation table at the end of the document. And so there are some items in there that could be amended to provide clarity. And we've made some comments on that, that would allow you to be a little bit more specific. Related to developing a public engagement policy. And best practices, which is different than an implementation plan. So I would wanna just. Highlight that, that there is some recommended language of a sentence there that could clarify how you handle things when you have. Um, a public project. Versus a, um, a, a plan like we have right now. Um, that there are some best practices, the IAP two. Public engagement, um, best practices, it's kind of the new standard, and we've given you some links to that. And then, um, on your, your heritage trees, you did such a great job. Thank you so much for bringing in new language. There was one section that never got talked about, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention because. You have some language in the plan related to the ACI. That already talks about having flexibility to be able to accommodate new development. And you're kind of missing that piece in your. Um, existing residential area section. That could allow you to have that same flexibility. And have some parity. So that would be one that we were hoping you would talk about. Um, and I am so happy to hear you say that you're talking about, uh, design standards. And, um, there is a recommendation in the implementation table again. For actually making that clear. Um, I, I would just flag for you as a public engagement professional. This is what I do with most of my life, every day. Um, for local governments is that, um, people get planning fatigue. And design standards are complicated and they take time to really. Um, engage people, help them understand, um. You're doing a great job in the work that Heather, um, has been doing with. Looking at patterns of place and, and your context, but there are some other tools. And it may take more time, so I just would say maybe don't rush. Um, by trying to wear, by potentially wearing people out a little bit in the winter months. Maybe give yourself a little more time to do it well and do it right. Um, and do a, a longer planning time horizon for those design standards. So. Thank you very much for your time and attention. And all the good work you're doing.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you. Hey, anybody else online? Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody in? In the audience that would like to speak?
If you would like to speak in the audience, we do ask that you provide a public comment signup card. Of which we have received none.
Okay. No public willing to comment. Alright, so, uh, we'll move on to our commissioner roundtable. Thank you to the members of the public who attended this meeting, um, with no, sorry, I won't go without for you.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Just back to the bylaws question, um, that I had before the meeting. Uh, when and who, I imagine Zach, that's a legal thing for you to, to go over and revise. Is that something that is gonna happen within? A quick timeframe, since some of the things are quite outdated.
I'll defer to Miss Tew on this, but I, we certainly will be reviewing it.
I'll, I'll probably just come up with a draft, um. That incorporates how things are currently. And for whatever reason, the bylaws weren't. Updated as well. Uh, but I think it'll be pretty straightforward.
And then will you send those to us before it goes to proper channels for us to comment on, or do you expect any comment from us or any input?
No, cause it's really how you are operating your meetings. Some of that is, um. You know, the, the, where, the way the city is set up, running public. Uh, meetings as well. Um, so I mean, it's not to say that the, the commission can't do things slightly different than council, but I don't know. That we want you deviating wildly from. Uh, what the practice of council is. So I would likely draft it, send it to legal review, then we would discuss it at a meeting. Uh, I don't believe you have to have a public hearing on it. Don't know why it would, um. But I think. Ultimately, it has to be approved by city council. So you would probably make a recommendation to city council. I think I saw the city council. Did adopt those for you. So.
Back in two thousand one? Sorry.
Go ahead.
Two thousand and one, correct.
Okay.
A lot, a lot has changed since then and before then. As far as how we run meetings, so. We had about a year, well, we probably had a few months where we didn't, we didn't meet in person. It was longer than that. Six months? In twenty.
Twenty?
One, twenty twenty, whatever. Ages ago. Um, I would appreciate that because. Things have kind of evolved and. And the, there is more order to the meeting, and I feel like we get that stuff done way quicker too. Cause we, we have a, a general idea of what our next, you know, task is and having. Having a. You know, an agenda is really nice too, so. In the beginning, I don't think we had any of that, and it was, we were kind of winging it, and. A lot of commissioners didn't know exactly where we were at or what we were doing, so. Um, it's been nice, and also like the order. Of, uh. When you're, when you should speak or when you should hold off from speaking is, is important too, cause I've. We've had really good discussions over the last couple of years, and a lot of that revolves around the fact that. Like each one of us gets a, a time to speak. Without interruptions and being cut off, and. I think that's important, cause you can finish your thought, or you can elaborate, and. Um, I appreciate that, cause I can speak for a long time about. Almost anything. So. Yeah, I'll be happy to see that. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I just wanted to ask Amy, is, is there anything that we need to be doing then with the information you gave us today to present back to the city council? Or is this just FYI for our?
At this point, it's just, um, for your information, and then when it goes to council, council decide what. If they're gonna send it back to you or not.
Okay.
Um, if you could forecast. Twelve months? Six months? How about six months? If you could forecast six months, what do you see? In the immediate future and maybe that far out as far as what our, our jobs will look like? As far as.
Asking about, but potential applications?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's a little hard to say, but I, I think you're going to be having a few. I think you'll be having some, uh, residential coming for you, and I think you'll have some conditional use permits coming forward. Uh, you may be having amended plats, amended preliminary plats coming back to. But that's about as much. Details I can give you. At this point.
And then the other things that you mentioned earlier with the. Workshops and. So forth, so we have quite a bit to do.
Yeah, the, that will be keeping you busy. That will be the one we anticipate doing the. Joint meetings of the commissions and councils will be the. Last Wednesday of the month. In January, February, and March. Uh, and the workshops, public workshops, I believe will be the fourth Tuesday, but I'll get you. We're still, it was nice of the reader to publish all of it. It wasn't final, final, when we did the presentation.
It is now.
But, um, at least it's out there that we're going to be doing this, and when it is finalized, we'll get you that full schedule.
Much appreciated. Any more discussion?
No.
No? Okay. Um. Thank you for. Members of the public who attended this evening, and thank you to commissioners, um. This time we'll now adjourn the meeting at. Six fifteen.
Wow, that's the. Haven't had one of those in a while.